I'd like to call this September meeting of the Bryan Board of Education to order. Like to start first with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, those who are watching on VMU and those who are in attendance tonight. Like to start with a roll call, please.
Scott?
Here.
Syndra?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Deborah?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Okay, we'll move forward with the approval and signing of the regular August meeting minutes. If there are no corrections or changes, I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I'm not aware of any public participation, so we'll go straight into communications. Excited tonight, our student spotlight is the Bryan City School Technology Team.
Hello, I'm Tony Malaga.
Hello, I'm Alice.
And we're part of the tech team at Bryan. So what is the tech team? We're a group of students from grades nine through twelve coming from all technology backgrounds. Some of us have never touched a computer before, and some of us have been doing this for several years. We each take a period of our day, so we have five students, or six students that take approximately five periods of our day to help the students of Bryan. So the responsibilities of the tech team, we're in charge of managing our parts inventory. So we have the parts needed to repair computers. We have to update our log for billing and for reference. The log, we have, yeah, administration actually takes what we say that's wrong with the computer and puts it into the billing letter for the, for the students' parents. We have to keep our Chromebook fleets in working condition, and we help students and staff with technical issues. And then we keep our passwords confidential. So when the student has an issue, they first go to the library. And in the library in our school, the librarians figure out if they can fix the issue. If they can't fix the issue, it comes to us. So the students fill out a support ticket like this that allows them to tell us what their issue is so we can get a better understanding of why these computers are in our possession. We also have our end of the log, which we're able to put in our findings of why the computer's not working and able to put in what we did to fix it and what parts we used to fix it so we can all keep it nice and organized for reference. So the benefits of the tech team. We're given extra responsibilities compared to the regular student body. This is important because employers now are looking for soft skills, which are the skills that can't be taught. So we are being taught problem solving, work ethic, leadership, time management, dependability, all through this, which you don't normally get. And then we get real life experience with computers and our components. Many of us want to pursue a field in computer science after. The administration has a lot of benefits. There's so many computers in our district that fail. The administration would not have time to fix all of them if it was just them. So we fix all of those Chromebooks that are malfunctioning, so gives, leaves pressure on the administration. And we also, administrators also have the option of delegating tasks that are important, but not necessarily important to get done right away. So this would include, we have a computer lab at Bryan that we have to keep up to date with software updates and all that. Benefits to the student body, there's a quick and easy way for students to get their computer fixed. We're able to be role models and be examples of hardworking students. Student tech team by the numbers, we have approximately 2,000 Chromebooks in our district. That's a rough estimate based on the number of students we have in the district. There's probably a couple more we left, we missed. We average about 893 computer repairs that we, those are the ones that we get in our log, not the ones that we helped during our class period or any other. We do a lot of computer repairs, a lot, we tend to do a lot of screens. And motherboard is what we tend to fix a lot of. So this is a couple pictures, the first one is four of the six kids on our team and a couple pictures of our room. And we're gonna open it up to questions if you have any.
How many years have you been doing this?
I have been doing this for three years.
And you have members of the team from ninth grade on up?
Yes.
Eight hundred and ninety-three repairs a year.
Yeah.
Six of you, you're working a lot every day. I'm not gonna do quick math, it'll be slow math, but that's a lot. Congratulations, thank you for all that you do.
The eight hundred and ninety-three number, for the number of computers we have, is that an unusual number? Is that a reasonable number? I guess thinking in terms of-
Eight hundred and ninety-three is the computer repairs, the 2,000 is the number that we have.
Right, so as a percentage, I mean, is that an unusually high percentage?
Of computer repairs.
Really?
And it's, a lot of computers also come in multiple times for, like, screens get broken. So I mean, when you have computers that are out to students, you expect a high number of damages to come back.
Broken screens is the biggest issue?
By far.
Do you find that a lot of those eight hundred and ninety-three repairs are some of the same people over and over?
Yeah. We have accounted outcomes when we look at our log to see how many times that students come in. We've had people up in the eight or nine times that by the end of the year they're coming back.
Are there certain times of the school year that you seem to be busier than others, or?
The beginning of the school year, we see a lot of computers. Anytime coming off of a break, you see a lot of computers. And then especially towards the end of the year, you also get a lot of computer, broken computers.
Any other questions for our students? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. So with computers on our mind right at the moment, next we'll go into our presentation about esports.
Anyone wanted to set up?
Okay.
And just to remind you, you guys are welcome to stay for the entire meeting, but you're also welcome to leave at any point. Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Caldwell, I've been teaching the district for five years now. And I've been involved with a good number of things, technology-wise, drones to robotics, et cetera. And so about a year ago, a couple of students came up to me in my robotics class and were like, Mr. Carr, we really like the programming aspect of this. We really like video games, is there like a way we can do like a video game technology course or a class where you learn to program and design video games from the ground up? And so we met as like a small team, Mr. Ari and a few others, Mr. Carr as well over there. We kind of talked over what that might look like, and it was a very big adventure to say the least. So then towards the end of the year, last year, we got some communication from Napoleon saying that they had an esports team that was affiliated with their athletic department. And so of course that spills into our student body and they have the buzz about that too. And so we went and checked it out, we thought this might be something that our students might be interested in. And so then we went ahead and we posted a survey and we wanted to kind of present this as a proposal that we kind of get on board with this esports movement. And I think you've already seen like a presentation, a basic presentation of some of the pros and cons, like more pros about this, so we're gonna walk through very quickly. Very much similar material, but maybe a few extra details that might help you make a decision on this. All right, well, let's quickly define esports. It's electronic sports, it's not just video gaming, all right? So this is just like any other typical sport you would think of, like, you know, if you think like basketball, you have five players, you try people's five players that would be at a strategic advantage to play for you on that court. And you're gonna sub- 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 in people again strategically. Same idea is gonna apply to here. We're gonna look at like what are our top playing ability players? And we're gonna put them in competition against other schools, just like you would any other sport. There's, there are practices involved, there are video sessions, talking strategy, what went, what went good, what went wrong, and then learning from that along the way. All right, so it's all about that teamwork, the communication, and that, 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 that strategic thinking as well, as well as leadership, you need someone to kind of step up as a leader and kind of pull the team together and, and to have success. Right, so is there a genuine interest? So I asked Mr. Ari if we could send out a survey to students. We sent it out through email, and we know how students are with email. However, within, is this open for about 24 hours? And we got over 140 responses in 24 hours from our student base. And we give the option, you know, if you would like to play competitively on an esports team for high school, right? And out of these 149 responses, 44.3% said yes, they'd like to do that. That's about 66 people or so out of the, out of the 149. We have some people, 20, 20.8% maybe, not quite sure if they would like to like jump in as a competitive level. And then as expected, about 34.9% are not really that interested. And I think that kind of goes with the general interest in video gaming. I think you see like about 70% of people on average are in video gaming and 30% are not. So it kind of fell into what we thought would, would happen. All right, so we had 66 students say yes, 31 say maybe, right? And if we were to take those numbers and form a club or a sport with those people, it would automatically become the largest activity in the district right away. So we know that we have a lot of interest, and so some benefits, immediate and long-term, real quick. It can build student relationships and confidence for sure. Provides a safe and social place for them to play, because this has to be done, like in the presence of a coach, has to be done on school campus, as part of the league rules, right? But then all of our students that we wouldn't normally see, you know, playing football, playing basketball, playing baseball, you know, those, those ones that slip through our fingers, we want to somehow hook them into school. This would be given an avenue to, you know, latch on to something that they can take pride in. And I think that inevitably is gonna spill into the classroom as far as they need to maintain certain grade levels to be part of the team. And so if they're not there yet, they're gonna work hard to get there. And we can also build in, allow these esports teams to build in like study sessions before they actually go to practice. So that way you have additional just mentorship that happens with not just student to student, but student to teacher or whoever might be managing the team. Breaks down barriers between different groups of students, encourages collaboration, prepares them for that digital world that's surrounding them more and more. Gives them rest lessons in real life, like perseverance, teamwork, as well as decision-making. You're not gonna win all your battles, and I think that's what some, a lesson that sometimes we lose by, you know, awarding 10th place, 11th place, 12th place trophies. You know, at some point to accept the loss and learn from it and move on. Encourages students to like maintain good grades, they can participate, provide scholarship opportunities. There are several, Ohio State, well, Ohio State has added an esports team to their repertoire as well as you have Tiffin and Akron as well that also have esports. So universities are, are getting on board with this and they're offering scholarships for individuals to play. All right, and also we have STEAM opportunities, we're talking about STEAM, kind of integrate that into our district all the time. There's also like video and production and streaming of the matches, that can, that's a whole avenue that our BCT program could latch on to. Coaching, game analysis, looking at numbers, looking at statistics, web design, marketing, shoutcasting, graphic design, and so on. So there's a lot of other branches that this thing can work its way into if, if allowed. Right, so the earlier presentation I shared with you, we were kind of leaning towards play versus. I talked to a few people from Esports Ohio, and I like it because this league is developed by educators and educators that are like in the gaming, but also into like, you know, providing their students with another opportunity to be included, be part of that district. For play versus, it's a for-profit organization and we're looking at $64 per player just to participate. Right, so I personally, I like, I shy away from an organization that's gonna try to pull profit from a high school organization. Esports Ohio is not for profit, there are no league fees at this moment, so it's zero cost to our, our district, it's zero cost to our players, and it's educator-led. So we have, there's a bunch of coaches from surrounding school districts that are involved, as well as their board is made up of educators around the state. So why Esports Ohio? It's in its second year of high school competition, so we're getting in at the ground level really. Last, last year was their Elvis season, they're playing this fall their Beta season, and then they'll actually go into competitive, like keeping track of scores officially this spring. So we'll be getting right in at the beginning of it. There are over 100 plus school districts that are gonna look, that are either part of this or working to be part of this. And we already mentioned universities and scholarships. If you, these are all linked, so I can show this presentation to you guys, but you can go to some of these links, like there are actually like millions of earnings made by professional esports players every year. And actually, one of the games that's part of this league, League of Legends, had 58 million viewers. That's more than the World Series, that's more than NBA Finals, that's more than Stanley Cup Finals, which is, I mean, that's pretty amazing if you think about it. So Super Bowl still holds the number one position, all right? But, but does this come out, you know, over the next few, over the last two years and hop up into second place? That's, that's telling you something. All right, so member schools in our area, I thought it was a really cool map, so that was on Esports Ohio, so I pulled it. Right, so I already went in and I just said that we're looking at it, that I might be looking to try to head this up. And so they gave me some information and we just simply got our school in there. We're not, we don't have any players registered yet because we wanna make sure that, you know, everyone's on board and we got the okay to do it. But, but the league included us graciously. But you have Ford County, Delta, you got Springfield, Liberty Center, Napoleone of course, where we went and visited, Oscego. So, you know, we are kind of on our own out here in the far northwest corner of Ohio, you know, so we have potential here to kind of lead the way when it comes to getting into esports, along with Napoleone and Ford County. All right, to kind of zoom out a little bit, now the, the map, this used to be only maybe 30 or 40 schools, now it's bloated to like maybe, I think, 70 schools altogether. And so we can see there's a good grouping around like Cleveland area and so forth, a few in Columbus and whatnot. But it's, it's growing, so numbers double from what it was last year. So, so pretty, it's pretty exciting, to say the least. So how do these seasons work? Fall season runs September preseason week, we just missed that. We're now in week one of competition, so there's scheduling matches, matches going on right now as we speak. It's gonna run all the way up through October, and then they have semifinals week in November. And it's actually then, you actually will, the only travel that would be required would be if you make it into the finals, you travel to Tiffin University and it gets hosted there in their esports arena and you compete there. As far as like games that are played, League of Legends, Overwatch, Rocket League, and Smash Brothers are the ones that this league has selected. The reason they choose those games is they, the league has decided that they will choose only titles that are teen or younger rated. They will not go with the mature content, because they, they feel like that doesn't really, that's not really a place that they wanna be. They think they can get, you can get, still get a good esports experience. And League of Legends is like one of the, is one of the top paying out esports that there is at the collegiate level and professional level right now. So they're kind of, they're kind of happy to kind of stick with that. There may be other games added, but again, they're gonna keep that teen rating or, you know. All right, there's one varsity team each game, one junior varsity team each game, and then you can have club teams beyond that if you wish, it's kind of the school district to decide that. We at least need a varsity team at the very least. Okay, this is a lot of information, but I just wanna kind of run through it quickly and then we can open up for questions. All right, for school league teams, you have to have one varsity team. If you have enough players, you go with a JV squad, you can do that too. But you have to also have like the number of players required for the game plus one as a sub. That's, that's mandatory, in case someone can't make it, someone gets sick or whatever. These people who are subs also are required to be at every practice and also required to be there when you actually have standing event, just like any athletic event. So roster side, you can easily get up to like 30 to 35 players like right away, just to have a single varsity team looking at. For League of Legends, it's five players, it's like a, it's a, there's like three different routes you kind of move across the map through. And it's a team-based strategy game, but, so you have five players plus the one sub, so that's six just for a varsity team. Rocket League, you have three plus one, so four, so you have 10 players there. Overwatch teams, we're, we're not gonna maybe do Overwatch this season, but we'll at least look at it. So we probably won't fill the team in Overwatch if we were to go that way. But Smash Brothers is five players with one sub, so that's easy. Just for varsity alone, you're looking at 16 players just to start out at least, that'll be on your roster actively competing. Practices, they recommend at least once a week in person for each title that they play. Professional esports leagues have their players play one sport, one game only to focus on. But it kind of depends again on, you know, your, the, how many players you have and how many players can be committed to, to playing each week as to like how many players that you actually have and if they go, if you're just having to stand more than one game or not. Tiffin University, I asked them like how often do they have their, their players play? They, they are asked to practice two and a half hours every day to, to, in order to participate. All right, if we have tons of students interested, how do we narrow it down? You really, you should narrow it down by games. So you schedule like, like an all-in, like we're gonna have a tryouts for League of Legends, everyone come in, we're gonna get you into slots and we're gonna have you run through and compete. And then at the end, coaches can pull that data and look at stats, look at like how players performed, who was your best performing players, and then look at, see like fitting your team in that way, just like you would like a basketball tryout or a football tryout or whatever. So if we still have a lot of numbers that remain, we can always set up a one V one bracket and narrow things down through a process of elimination. Does that mean that those players couldn't try to, you know, work their way back in? No, but it just means for that, that season, fall or spring, we'll be locked in on the roster for those teams. Well, let's interview those sports, that's another big question. We try to assign matchups early in the week, and then it's up to the schools that are matched up to decide on a time. So if you have players that are like, we're doing, doing dual sport, if you wanna do it as a dual sport option or, or keep it kind of separate as far as like club versus sport, we try to, they try to make it so that we can work around those other practice schedules. In the event that we really can't, then it might be where, that's where the sub jumps in. You know, subs of that team or subs work and play on that team during that time. Right, necessarily can allow us for maximum flexibility really. Can students compete in more than one game? They can, that's entirely up to us as a program. But I, I would think that we would wanna focus them on whatever their specialty is, happens to be. And just because that mirrors what the professional esports teams do, if that's what they're looking to do later on. All right, I had mentioned that the next rate, rating that loses teen, that's suitable for age 13, students age 13 and up. And again, they, they decided on this because they wanna make sure that it's age appropriate for high school level play as well as to be successful at the college level, so that's why we look at that. And so those are the four that the league has decided. Again, the links do take you to like, you know, describing the rules of play, gives you an example of competition. So when this presentation is, is shared to you, you're more than welcome to click the links and check it out if you are looking to do, check some of this stuff out before any. All right, what do we need as a district? We need at least like six computers, they recommend PCs. However, three of those four games, Overwatch is the one that I'm not sure about. I think Overwatch is PC or Linux only, but the other ones will work on our, on a Mac OS, right? And so we already have like the computers in district, we can make use of our CAD lab or whatever, which would be more than enough horsepower to do what we need to do. All right, student essentials, these are things that are optional, that students could purchase themselves to bring in or maybe they already have. Gaming had said a license for the game, like for Rocket League, they'd have to get their own license for that, for that game. They would log in through STEAM on our computers and they'd log in with their account. Usernames have to be school appropriate, of course, so if they have a name that's not appropriate, they're gonna have to go ahead and change that before they can compete. So, so there's that. So there's a few things, League of Legends is free, and if they, you can purchase things in-game but they do not change the way the game plays, that way it's a level playing field for everyone involved with that game. Optional gear, like gaming chairs, gaming keyboards and mice, gaming mousepads, esports uniforms. I've already talked with Bills, a lot room, and Ryan Jeans there, and he's working on some, drafting some designs up just, just as like a, some prototypes that we can like have the team decide on. Try to keep that local as bad as we can. All right, cost and budgeting, I just looked this up because I found, it's something they got, because I felt just in case we want, we're curious, like what if we wanted to just get a PC lab dedicated just for esports? What if we wanted at some point in the future to make an esports arena for our district? For, with nothing, having nothing in district, then we're looking at probably between four to five grand to set up. That would, that would just be like the, you know, five to six gaming PCs. But we already have, like as I mentioned, the stuff in district. So the startup costs, we're looking at basically like zero to get going on this. All right, questions that you might have?
So Matt, do you just, with the, the big map of the state of Ohio, a lot, 70-some schools, you know, where there's no Division One, Division Two, I mean, can you play anybody? How's that gonna work?
Right now, yes, but this, what they're doing this Beta season is they're trying to establish conferences. They're trying to establish like by, they're trying to go by region. So similar to what we would do like with cross districting and stuff like that, or football and whatever, they're trying to go that route. Now as far as like D1, D2, D3, I don't know if they're, if they're leaning towards that or not. I would like to think that we don't need to go there with esports. I think it's, it's essentially a universally applicable type of experience that I would hope that we could just like do conferences by region. That way you could do like a meetup for like a semifinal or something like that, and then that would then go to the finals in the future, as more schools join up.
How many years has this been going on now?
The Ohio Esports is in their second year.
Okay.
So Play Versus has been around for several years. Play Versus is, has been, is affiliated with the National Federation of High School Athletics or Sports. And so they've been around a little bit longer. Again, they're more for profit, they are more nationally invested. And so with the Esports Ohio league being, again, built from the ground up here in Ohio, it just seems like a better fit for us to start out as well.
What, what type of sports will they be doing? I mean, like football?
Oh, as far as the games and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, so League of Legends is more like a, like a, kind of like a fantasy RPG slash strategy type of game. So where you have three different routes to get from your, where your base to the enemy's base. And you need to take out towers along your way to get there. And as you do, your team gets perks for doing that as you move along. So that's one, one type of game. The other game is Rocket League, it's like a three-on-three, it's like soccer but using driving cars around and knocking the ball around the arena, trying to score a goal. So it's, it's, it's more, more soccer oriented. And then Smash Brothers Ultimate is like a fighting game, a straight-up like Street Fighter game or whatever if you, if you're familiar with, with that genre. And so what they're trying to do as a league is try to find games that fit different genres. Would there be like room for like a FIFA or a NCAA football or whatever? I know that the league's open to suggestions, it's just a matter of like making that all work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What do you see as the need of coaches, advisors ratio to number of students that maybe didn't?
Great question, all right? So I don't think I alone will be able to manage 60-some kids, all right? Because I have been warned that when we do open practice, which is like open to anybody who wants to come in and play the team or play with the team, you're looking at 30 to 60 kids that's gonna show up and want to game and, and, you know, fit their best skills against each other. I think we're, I mean, if they grow, if we see initially that it gets to that, I mean, I think at least two like co-coaches. You know, someone that can, so that way you can have, if maybe, like I have cross responsibilities. So those come first, and then I have my esports, and then we have this esports thing if we get this thing started. So it'd be nice to have one other person to be like, you know, we need, a coach has to be there, that's like part of the rules. You can't have kids in the building with no supervision. Exactly. So at least two co-coaches and then, and then, you know, if anyone else that would want to, you know, volunteer and, you know, help advise. You know, obviously that would be welcomed. But, you know, if it, if it comes to the point where we just have too many, you know, too many chickens on the farm, we'll have to, we'll have to maybe limit how many we actually, you know, take care of, how many we actually have come and participated at any given time. To say sign up, you know, the people- To say sign up, you know, the people who are on the team, they get first dibs, and then if we open slots, we can have other people hop in and take those spots.
What are the, uh, skill sets, attributes that you see a program like this fostering development of?
I think, um, well, working as a team is huge, I think, um, appropriate conversation with others is another. Um, uh, we, we hear it in the hallway a lot, uh, and, and, you know, I think at, at any district, um, you can hear what, how students talk to one another. And I think that esports is, and, and probably managed esports is a way to encourage like proper conversation, especially if you have a difference of opinion, um, working out to a solution that works best for all involved. Um, uh, also, um, I think that, uh, you know, diversity, like trying to build that, that, uh, that diverse experience from people you wouldn't normally talk to maybe. Um, from, and, and breaking down those barriers so that like you, you feel comfortable approaching somebody uh, that you may not normally talk to, uh, about, you know, whatever you have anything to talk to them about.
Okay.
Yeah.
The numbers, do you see the, the lion's share of those numbers coming from kids that don't participate in any of the other organized sports at this time, or are you gonna, you're gonna have some bleed over of people playing, you know, football, soccer, whatever it might be?
There, there are, um, there are, it's a mixed bag, it's a mixed bag for sure. I would say, um, looking, just glancing through the name list, I was able to pick out probably, I think, half of those sixty-six are people that you are not really into any type of athletics here at the school.
Okay.
Um, the other half are, however, talking to a couple of those, I said, I said, well, what about, what if we, you know, there's two seasons, there's fall and spring. You know, would one of those seasons not conflict as much as the other, depending on what you, what you play? Uh, because we have some athletes that do just football and that's it, we have some people that do track and that's it, we have some that do all. Um, and, and, and that would be something we could definitely do to make it flexible for, for them. But I do, I would say probably half of the people that said, yes, they're interested, are ones that we really don't have a, you know, a, a name to, you know, I mean, they don't really have um, an investment in athletics or extracurricular at this time.
Okay.
You know.
Matt, the, well, the question too, when you mentioned the seasons, is the fall season and the spring season just identical? So, so some that can't participate in the fall, they could try out in the spring?
Absolutely.
They don't, they don't continue on from the fall to continue advancing farther in the spring?
There would be, uh, there would be a whole nother round of, of tryouts.
Okay.
I mean, uh, basically.
And basically the season starts over?
Right, if they've been planning for fall season though, the idea would be like, they're, they should be experienced, so they should fare well.
Sure.
Even if new competition comes in, you know, um, and, and again, it would be up to like the number to come down to like who performs the best, you know, that's just like you would.
But fall season would end, have its championship?
Yep.
Spring season would start and have its championship?
The way, it's the way it's set up right now, that's the way it works, yeah.
That's great.
Yep.
So with approximately sixty-six students that showed initial yes as an interest, um, would we jump into a JV team as well? Because at the numbers, um, I counted sixteen for varsity amongst the three different games that could be played, so now you're at thirty-two.
Right. Yeah, um, uh, I, I think that we would, based on the numbers, again, having varsity and JV is based upon your, the interest level of the district and the numbers that you can actually commit to practice and commit to playing on the, on, you know, when the matches are scheduled.
Yet to be seen.
Yeah. So, so, and, and that's why they suggest like, once you get some, um, uh, interest and you have players coming in for practice or for open sessions, then you start, you know, tightening the, the parameters, like you must show up at this time, this is when practice is gonna happen, and you're gonna have, you're gonna find those people who are dedicated. Um, so that in itself will narrow the numbers. You're, you're gonna, you might have sixty-six people that are just like fair weather fans, you know, they show up when it's convenient for them, and then, you know, they like the game, but they're not really seriously into, involved wanting to be part of this team, um, but they just wanna come and play every now and then. Um, but yeah, I think for sure would probably would have, and based on the numbers, we would be feeling a varsity and a JV for most of these, yeah, absolutely.
So you're gonna need a feeling out process here, an opportunity to get into it and just see how things start to manifest themselves or flesh them, flesh them out?
Exactly right, and I think that's kinda why the timing is actually kinda perfect, because, you know, we were trying to, you know, you know, get this going before we can get and be involved with fall season, however, it would have been a nightmare trying to get everyone, all our ducks in a row, because they also have to, we have to have a parent meeting with, with them. Uh, parent, uh, athlete or esports athlete meeting where they have to, um, they're made, they're made aware of the rules, the regulations of the league. They have to sign, there's some signings, some papers they have to sign out, we have to scan and fax those in or, or email them in, uh, to the league as well. So there's a whole process beyond, you know, from saying, yes, we're gonna do this, to actually competing. Um, it, it is, there is a little bit of a, a trial by fire type of process, yeah. Yeah.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Powell?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're gonna send that to us, I know we got it.
I sure can.
One version of it.
Yeah, I will.
I think there was some different.
It's in PowerPoint, so if, is that gonna be okay to send it PowerPoint-wise if you're willing? Okay, I will do that, yep, no problem.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on to the Ford County report. I do have a, just a quick little report this evening. The school year that has started off very busy with eight-hundred-and-eighty-one students. That was my report as of last month's board meeting, so that could have changed a little bit, but I think that's a good number. You know, they always average around four-hundred students. The, um, students have participated in many things, including Patriot Day ceremony for the veterans, hopefully you saw that in the newspaper, we got some nice coverage for Ford County. The cosmetology salon will be opening October fourth, you can stop by or stop in or make an appointment uh, with our cosmetology students, and they will be taking appointments and seeing people and offering their services Mondays and Fridays from nine to one. The Four Star Cafe is always fun if you've never been. It will be opening late October, I'll get a date, um, soon. They serve delicious culinary concoctions by the culinary students Wednesday through Friday from eleven to one. And new this year for the students, they now have a salad bar cafeteria, I'm told that's been well received, so. That's my Ford County report for today. And I'm sorry, I will go back here to the agenda. Also, it's alright, it's not coming out. Well. Looky there, just when you, just when you think you have it. Mike sees what's going on here, he sees things. I'm hitting the right button, it's just the pop-ups. Tech team, I really am hitting the right button. Just saying. Okay.
Is it working or not?
Yeah. It is. We're there.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. Treasure report, I shouldn't have known, I've done this for a while. We'll move on to Mr. Shaker for your treasure report.
Alright, thank you. We'll begin with our cashback reconciliation report as of August thirty-first, twenty nineteen. In Farmers and Merchants Bank, we have five million, seven-hundred-ninety-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and fifteen cents, with outstanding checks and other adjustments of two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Investments in Star Ohio, nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and sixty-three cents. UBS Financial, four million, three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. State Bank, six million, three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy dollars and thirty-seven cents. Star Ohio Plus, two million, four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and thirty-nine cents for a total of investments of fourteen million, one-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and seven cents. Petty cash and change funds amount to seven thousand, four hundred dollars for a total fund balance of nineteen million, six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Major funds include the general fund with a balance of fourteen million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. The bond fund, one million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. And the permanent improvement fund, one million, seven-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy dollars and forty-nine cents. There are also several other financial reports, uh, available as Exhibit B, uh, in your packet. Any questions on any of those reports? Now we'll move on to the final appropriations for the, uh, fiscal twenty-twenty year. Uh, total appropriations for the year, twenty-eight million, two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and eighty cents. Uh, notable changes from our temporary appropriations, an increase in the general fund of forty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. Uh, a dis- an increase to the food service fund, fifteen thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, public school support at the principal's fund, seven thousand dollars. District managed activities, eleven thousand, seven-hundred-and-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Uh, decreases in appropriations in both federal grants and auxiliary funds, uh, fifteen thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents and nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and ninety-three cents, respectively. That has to do with the closing out of the fiscal twenty-nineteen year. Uh, an increase in the permanent improvement appropriations of thirty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents for an additional curriculum item and equipment owing to the establishment of a new classroom. Total changes in appropriations from the temporary appropriations, ninety-two thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and six cents. Any questions on that? Uh, we ask your permission to establish Fund 467, the Student Wellness and Success Fund. This, uh, fund is the fund that has been designated by the Auditor of State to receive the funds, um, being sent to us through the new state budget for student wellness and success. We also, uh, request your approval to advance funds from the general fund to the cafeteria fund, fifteen thousand dollars to cover purchases made in advance, uh, for this school year. And finally, we would like to acknowledge and thank, following donations, one hundred dollars from Gregory and Mary Spangler for the class of twenty-twenty-three, one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars matching grant from Your Cause for the SiD Daily Scholarship, and two hundred dollars from the Bryan area business women for unpaid school lunches.
Are there any questions about the treasure report? Now I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom, that's the second, thank you, Mike.
Sindra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, tennis court update?
Yeah, I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Savage slip in here with his tennis court update, and then we can save the rest of your report for later.
Uh, tennis court update, we should see some things happen here in the next two weeks, major changes, such as landscaping around the perimeter of the tennis courts, um, drainage tying in from the tennis courts to right there inside the football, the fencing area. The fencing around the outside of the tennis courts should be taken place. Um, the surface itself should be, should be happening, the net posts, the courts outlined, and also the court's painted here. Weather permitting, we should have a lot of that taken place in the next two weeks, maybe two and a half weeks. Hopefully by next time.
Okay.
We meet.
I breathe.
Next time we meet, it should be, uh, playable. That kind of way. That's for a wrap.
Any questions?
Questions about that?
Still hoping to see some play there then?
Uh, the, the girls are still hoping, I'll be now, hope for that August first is the last.
October first.
I'm sorry, yeah, October first, their, their last home match on the schedule, they're still hoping that they can, they get into your home.
Keep it on finger scrubs then.
Yeah, I guess we are. They are too, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on with the superintendent's recommendations.
Thank you, under administrative recommendations, first of all, you have an agreement with the hospital in Fountain City Christian School. Um, this is a service agreement. Chad Bassett helps facilitate this. It's with their auxiliary funds, which is the reason that you're approving it for this evening. Next, you're gonna see a list of textbooks that are currently being used in our curriculums for both the Bryan Elementary and the Bryan Middle School, High School. Um, an oversight on our part, uh, that we should have brought this to you on a more annual basis, and we will do so in the future, but we wanted to get everything caught up. Um, we did have a new math curriculum at the elementary level, which is Ready Math. Um, and this represents only textbooks, like hard, regular textbooks. So there's a lot of the curriculum that is electronic, uh, that is hands-on, uh, activities and experiments that are not listed here that are supplementing as well. And those are my administrative recommendations.
Any questions for Mr. Savage? If not, I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike?
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Sindra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under personnel recommendations, um, under classified staff adjustments, we have Aubrey Dixon, educational aide, seven-point-five hours per day effective August twenty-sixth. Jen Andrews, educational aide, seven-point-two-five hours per day effective nine-three. And that's just due mainly to some bus route, um, getting a little closer on what the bus routes are actually taking. I'm gonna go to the addendum as well, and we have one more adjustment, Kathleen Ottenweller. Um, going from a one-on-one to a one-on-two aide, this is an S.A. certified position, five-point-seven-five hours per day, and that was effective September tenth. Under classified resignations, we have Linda Blagu, um, six-to-twelve educational aide, and that was effective August twenty-sixth. Recommending new hires, Amanda Romes as a six-to-twelve server, three and a half hours per day, zero years' experience effective August twenty-sixth. Emily Keller, our last, one of our last open positions at the elementary for preschool, this is an S.A. certified position, five hours per day, Tuesday through Friday, zero years' experience effective September fourth. And then one of our final, um, high school positions, Velvet Phase, six-to-twelve, five hours per day, zero years' experience effective September tenth. We'd also like to approve as classified substitutes the list that you see in front of you. And then moving on to our certified staff, we have Megan Lidle-Steele, moving on the salary schedule to Masters plus twenty. That would go effective August fourteenth. Three substitutes for our certified, um, class, and then a supplemental contract for the nineteen-twenty school year for Laura Knight as choir accompanist, paid at tutor rate effective August fourteenth. Are there any questions regarding those personnel recommendations?
If not, I'll take a recommenda- or a, a motion to approve the personal recommendations?
So moved.
Thanks, Tom.
Second.
Thanks, Mike.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Sindra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under legislative finance update, I would like to go back to something that Kevin mentioned, um, in his recommendations about the Student Wellness and Success Fund. So, uh, Kevin, I attended a session last week and, and got some more information, and Kevin and I have talked, um, we've talked with Chad Bassett as well. So initially, when the initial reports came out in the biennial budget, remember we said that, that more details will come as time goes on and as we have these sessions, we'll learn more and more. So one thing that we learned last week is our funding, and the money that we're getting in the student wellness is around five-hundred-thousand dollars for this year, and around one-point-four dollars total for that biennial budget. Now that money can be used and is to be used to promote student health and wellness, mental health supports. Um, it can be used for capital projects, so bricks and mortar, equipment, technology. Um, it can be also used, which is different from stimulus money we got about five to six years ago, it can be used to help support what we're already doing in Bryan City schools. Um, you have to partner with a community partner, um, in the planning process of this, so that can be your ESC, that could be, um, uh, the Adams Board, that could be a renewed mind, which we already have a partnership with. Uh, it could be with our Juvenile Court System, possibly with our city, they weren't on the list. We can also use the money for school safety, so like our SRO program. So what Kevin and I and Chad are going to do over the next few weeks, they stressed at this meeting that the most important part is you don't have to spend the money this year, but you have to have your plan in place. So I met with a group of staff members this morning and just asked them to start small and dream big, just help prioritize the needs of the district. We're gonna do the same with the administrative staff, we're gonna do the same with some, some teaching groups and other staff members, just to get some ideas of where our priorities should be. Um, and then we'll, we'll talk about that with the board as we continue down this process, but, um, it is good news. But, um, it is good news for our district. It is a significant amount of money that can be used to help support our vision. I will tell you that I truly believe that this district has taken steps on its own over the past five years. Um, so many of the plans that other school districts are looking at are adding social workers, um, developing those partnerships to get school-based mental health services, things that we have already put in place on our own. Um, so again, the question will come down to what is the best use of these funds to help us reach our long-term mission? Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I don't think so.
Any questions from the board members on hearing that?
Not at this time, other than that's great. We'll have that at our resources to, yeah, help students.
Yeah, and it has to be focused on students. The plan has to be focused on students.
Look forward to that plan, super committee.
Okay. So also, we have some board meeting dates. Our next board meeting will be October twenty-first here in the boardroom. Our LPDC did set a meeting date for November twelfth, and our Business Advisory Committee will meet October fifteenth at seven A M. Um, and then we're going to turn it over to our administrators, and we'll start with Mr. Savage in our report in our athletics.
Just coming from junior high volleyball tonight, so their record is now seventh grade lost at Hilltop in three, so they're four and three. Eighth grade volleyball defeated Hilltop in two, so they're four and three overall. Junior high cross country, I know they just were coming back from the playing tonight, um, this, this past weekend at the Alabama North Invitational. The boys were nineteenth out of twenty-one, the girls were third, and I know the girls were real excited coming to the volleyball tonight. They, they won tonight, and they, I think, five of the top seven runners coming in tonight did very well. Uh, junior high football, seventh grade's oh and two right now, they play one game because one, they have a team last week. They, they've had one game, they both played this Thursday at Wasean for eighth grade and seventh grade's home. Um, high school cross country, Alabama North Invitational this past weekend, the boys were ninth out of nineteen, and we had one boy that came in first overall, and the girls were eleventh out of sixteen, and we had, I think our top finisher on the girls' side was, was fifth. Uh, football, the varsity team is one and two overall, the JV is two and one. The freshmen will have their first game this coming, or week from tonight at Wasean. Golf is four and one in the league, and they were second at the Golden Bear Invitational this past weekend over in Stryker. The boy soccer team is, is at four, oh and five right now. Just one thing so far is just time is just, we had our fair share of ties at this point. So they're four oh and five, they're sitting, I believe, two oh and one in the league. Uh, girl soccer's two, four and two, they're on a two-game winning streak. The tennis team is twelve and one as they, they're off tonight, they play their state team bench tomorrow at Landers Central Catholic. Uh, the volleyball team, the varsity team is seven and three overall, they're three and oh in the league, and they have a big bench at Wasean tomorrow. JV is about five hundred, they told me, so around, around four and four. Freshman is, is one and six. Some key dates coming up for us over the next month or so. The league golf meet is already here, it's this Friday in Defiance at Oglesay's Golf Course, our, our country club in Defiance, September twentieth at nine o'clock, they tee off. The Athletic Boosters will have the reverse raffle on Saturday, September twenty-eighth at the Buffalo Road Receptional, the dinner's at five-thirty, the raffle's at seven. We're going to host the league cross country meet for the first time in nine years. That's on Saturday, October twelfth in Bryant Rec Park. The junior high will run at eleven-thirty, the high school will, will run at ten o'clock. We're going to talk about the tennis court update, so questions for me pertaining to athletics?
Good report, I appreciate the, um, information so we can see it in print. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
Um, my report night centers around the school report card that we released this week, um, so I'd like to just go through that. I had some more statewide statistics that I had a chance to break down and look at today, which I think is, is helpful, um, when we compare ourselves. So overall, our district, um, was a C. If you look at O D, that says proficient. Sometimes the school, and a C is just average for the state of Ohio, C is proficient or expected. Um, is what it's supposed to be. If you look at the scores across the state, it is pretty much a bell curve, but the bulk of the schools right there in the middle. Um, you look at some of our similar districts in size and demographics, they're all pretty much a C, um, wherever they're at. Achievement, if you look at achievement component of that, makes up twenty percent of your total grade. Um, you look at indicators met in that, and we're in F indicators, that were D for achievement. I looked into the indicators met a little bit, so I want to see, you know, let's get some guidance here on how all those districts are doing. My rough estimate today was seventy-one percent of the districts in the state of Ohio were F indicators met too. So we're really kind of battling, I don't know, a really uphill climb there, and that's eighty percent of your students passing these tests. You know, we have some seventy-sevens, some seventy-eights, some seventy-six, we're going into eighty, it's just an X, it's, it's the best, it's not a, a curve or anything like that, it's just flat eighty percent. Um, progress, again, we're D. Progress is our value add. I've been telling you this for three years and still run through that. We are still getting zeros for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at the elementary because the middle school I R N is attached to that elementary building. So really, we're getting scores for fourth and fifth grade there, but they're saying you need scores for sixth, seven, and eight. We don't have any from three years ago, so that's a zero. That really hurts us if you're dividing that out. Um, just one of those things, we think next year that will, that'll work itself out. Um, gap closing, looking at most vulnerable populations that we have, you know, special needs are those twenty percent, or socioeconomic status, we're B there, it's where we've been about. Um, we're doing a good job of servicing those kids, and we have a relatively high number. Um, so I'm, I'm proud of that, that we are reaching those kids. Graduation rate, we're intending to graduate kids, um, what we're supposed to do. Proving at-risk K three readers, um, is a D or C last year. We addressed an issue with this, we believe, in about January or February of last year, that we think is going to reflect next year. Um, so way, this kind of way we were doing things, um, that we caught something, and we think that's going to be, come way up next year, is our hope. Last year, you catch it, you know, so it's too late. So we're prepared for success. This one really bothers me because when you go to the interview day, you know, we have all the businesses coming to interview your kids, they're always raving about our kids. Your kids are so great. They're prepared, they, they interview very well, I'm saying, but we're, we're D here. Um, you look at that, it's two years old data, so we're back to two thousand and sixteen, they track it back that far. But if you look across the state, eighty-two percent of the school districts in the state of Ohio were geared F in this category. So really, only eighteen percent of our schools are proficient or above in this. Um, again, kind of, kind of just depressing, I think we're producing a good product, but the state, but the state measurements, they're saying we're, we're D there. That's, that's remediation free, a college A C T, enrolled in college in two to four years, or industry-recognized credentialed. So you really get no credit there for the student that you've graduated, that's worked hard, they've deployed, and they go right into the workforce. The state's not recognizing that as prepared, um, which is frustrating, because we have some, some very productive citizens that, that are going there. Questions on the report card there, quickly, I'll go through that.
That's what we say, it doesn't tell the whole story.
Absolutely. You know, the state superintendent, he had a statement when he, when the report card was released, saying, this is one measurement, go to your individual school district, ask questions, um, to figure out what is really going on, besides just, you know, most of these are based on, on a test.
We, we have a, an amazing system here, amazing teachers and administrators and our students are very fortunate to be in this district, in my opinion. Um, that means nothing. It does, but it doesn't. It's just, it's not a fair evaluation, and we all know it. It's been this way for years. It's not a fair evaluation. All right.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to pinch hit for Mrs. Cox today. Um, as I said, she is at the junior high cross country meet and wasn't sure if she would make it back in time. So we want to share that the Bryan Elementary, um, is being recognized by the Ohio Department of Education for its P V I S, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Support Team, and they received the highest award they could, which was a bronze, and they've also been asked to present in Columbus in December. So we have a team together that will be traveling to Columbus. We also have been asked to present locally in Toledo, so we have another team that's going to travel to Toledo to present on our P V I S program. So congratulations to, um, our elementary school and good luck to our presenters and, you know, possibly down the road, we could have them as one of our spotlights to, to do that presentation. Bryan Elementary and Bryan Middle School, High School will have Constitution Day on Tuesday, September seventeenth. Um, again, O D E rec, highly recommends that we have some, um, curriculum that is devoted to the Constitution on that date. Our school safety drill is coming up on Monday, September twenty-third, and parents will get an instant alert regarding that. A reminder that this year, Bryan Elementary is switching to trimesters for their grading, so progress reports for students will be going home Monday, September thirtieth. And then finally, Bryan City Schools are going to participate in National Walk Bike to School Day on Wednesday, October second. Uh, students are encouraged to bike or walk to school on this day, and it's built, it's celebrated in October to create an opportunity for schools to join together and celebrate the energy of National Bike Month. And along that lines, we are partnering with the City of Bryan to do a study on how students are getting to school, and we're collecting that data right now, um, which will help us apply for grant funding, uh, to, to add some more safety, um, issues, so. Mr. Ray, I hope I didn't steal all your thunder with that.
Well, that's okay, I actually got a fit list here because a lot of the same stuff was talked about with Chad.
No, it's kind of felt you checking these off back there.
Curriculum with Mrs. Cox with, uh, the elementary, so I'll just echo what Cinder said, we have awesome stuff happening inside our, our walls every day, so I mean, this is just one of the many things that we had going on here, so it's great to see them in action and showcasing that, so. Um, it's midterm next week already, so we're about halfway through the first quarter. So with that, uh, comes the arrival of homecoming usually, so homecoming's on the horizon here. Uh, that's the, well, September thirtieth, the, the, last week, September slash first week of October is when that kicks off, so we're bringing back a bonfire this year for students in grades nine through twelve. We're just going to host it across the street here at the church, so we thank them for their hospitality and allowing us to, um, burn some pallets over there and have some fun, and our students are going to take part in some grade-level, uh, games, Ultimate Frisbee and, uh, farm some teams and have a little fun that night. And then throughout the week is the annual float building, so you'll see those displayed on Friday morning as you pull in, uh, the Homecoming Friday as you pull into our campus, those will be on display. Hopefully the weather holds out and everyone can see all the, the great work that students always do on those. Then we have our fun pep assemblies that homecoming Friday with the game Friday night, so we're looking, looking forward to all of our homecoming festivities. As mentioned, we actually have one of our, one of three required safety drills coming up in our building, ours is tomorrow, actually. So we've been working with our school resource officers and are looking forward to putting our students through a scenario that is unknown to them and to the staff, actually to our admin team and the school resource officers themselves. No one knows the, uh, the, um, the plan, so they have to respond appropriately and put their, their training to the test. So afterwards, we always do a debriefing with the students and the staff and allow the students to ask a couple of questions, and we give them feedback, and our resource officers walk around and pop in the classrooms and give them some answers that they're looking for, so that's tomorrow. And then at the beginning of October, we also have Ready, Set, Relax. If you know Brad Hurdick, or if, uh, you're familiar with the CAF team, uh, that represents here in town, um, we have a great speaker on the way that's going to speak to all of our students on the seventh about overcoming, overcoming challenges. So we're really looking forward to what he has to bring to us, so.
All right.
A lot of good things still happening. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, well, I appreciate everyone that's here this evening and those who have watched. We do have a reason to go into executive session for C, conference with the board's attorney to discuss matters which are subject to pending of, um, imminent court action, and D, preparing for conducting reviewing negotiation bargaining session with employees. I do not expect any, um, um, any actions taken, um, and we appreciate your time. I'll take a motion to move into executive session. So moved. Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Scott.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cinder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.